Good evening, citizens and staff. I am Mayor Kara Westfall, and I hereby call to order this council meeting on Monday, October 17th, 2022. The time is 7:04. Roll call, please.
Counselor Tocqueville?
Yes.
Counselor Schumer?
Here.
Counselor William?
Here.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have presentation of certificates to Jesse Snyder. And Jesse has been City of Klamath Falls as a Certificate of Service for Detective Jesse Snyder, Klamath Falls Police Department, for the completion of 10 years of service on October 10th, 2022. And we'll make sure, he's not here, so we'll make sure he gets that. We also, the City of Klamath Falls, has a Certificate of Service awarded to Andrew Foster, Public Works Department, Water Distribution Division, for the completion of 30 years of service on October 26th, 2022. And we will make sure he gets that. So we thank our employees. Public comment. We are now going to go into public comment. And we do have lots of people. So we'll start with Tom. Sheesh. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, council members. I'm here on behalf of the static display in Veterans Park. My name is Tom Sheese. I've lived in Klamath Falls for 30 years now. I retired from the military as a base commander in 2008 after serving for 25 years. In 1941, when the Japanese attacked Pearl Harbor, my father traveled here from Salem to go to Klamath Falls Airport to be, to begin his Navy training to fight the Japanese in World War II. We were a Navy base for approximately five years. In the 50s, we became an active-duty Air Force Base where we had F-106s, F-86s, F-101s. And we were an active-duty base all the way through the 70s with almost 2,000 people here that were part of the military. The active-duty left, that's when we became Kingsley Field, when we were an active-duty base, the active-duty left. And in the 80s, we became an Air National Guard Base. And we started F-4 trainings. We were F-4 training through the 80s. We became, in about 1989, we became F-16 training that lasted until 1998. And in 1998, we became an F-15 training base. 25 years of F-15 training here. They just produced a coin, the Air Force did. It's a 50-year anniversary of the F-15. That means that airplane's been around for 50 years, supporting our country and its defense. We have been a part of that F-15 training for the past 25 years. This town, of any town in this state, is a military town. We've had military presence for 80-plus years. And I'm surprised that we're debating whether or not we should have a static display in Veterans Park. The past 25 years, we've had over 1,000 members out there. $75 million worth of economic impact and payroll. Really, if you use the multipliers, it's well over $100 million in economic impact for Klamath Falls. If we do not support having this static display in Veterans Park, I feel like we're kicking dirt in the face of the current military members and in the face of all the veterans that live here. I'm not sure you're aware of the fact that we have a Veterans Memorial down at the park right now. That project was initiated by Kingsley Field, by the Oregon Air National Guard. It was a project managed by us. It was supported by the town. There was over 100 members of the town and businesses in the town that supported that project. And we started it in August and finished it by November for Veterans Day, totally free to this town, probably over $300,000 donated. It's very much a great symbol of our town. And I think that it's disappointing that we can't have this airplane, which some people in the paper have been able to express their opinion and say that it's a symbol of war and fighting. That airplane right there is a symbol of peace and strength. We have no idea how many lives, how many wars have been averted, and how many lives have been saved by having this airplane here. And we train the best fighter pilots in the free world right here. Please support the F-15 static.
Edwin Tuie?
As you said, my name is Edwin Tuie. I am here on my own behalf. I don't represent any group. But about me, I'm a medical professional, member of this community for the last 27 years. I am a current member of the Air National Guard at Kingsley Field, where I hold the rank of Colonel. My father is one of the folks that Tom Sheese just mentioned, who's enshrined in a brick in Veterans Park. And I would, all due respect, Mayor, ask you to turn around and just have a look at the picture behind you. And I think that speaks to what I want to say, that that base is integral to our community, that as leaders, arc of our community, you hold the responsibility to continue the healthy relationship that you fostered with that base. I appreciate the support that this committee has given to this project, the static display, not once, but twice. And I think it would be a travesty if the third time that has to happen doesn't. You know, I serve with over 1,000 current members of Kingsley Field, who you would disrespect by not supporting this project. And as Colonel Sheese mentioned, that you can multiply that over decades and decades to the number of people who you will specifically disrespect by choosing not to put a memorial to peace in a place called Veterans Park. Veterans Park, in honor of the people who have fought and died for our nation's freedom. Veterans, I myself am a combat veteran. I've served in a combat zone for six months of my life. You will disrespect me if you do not support this, as you will many of the fine people in this room behind me. Please do not disrespect me.
Thank you. Charles Ebner? Charles Ebner? Charles Ebner, did you want to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thanks for having us here to speak on behalf of this. I've just got a couple of short comments. The first one being, it's Veterans Park. Maybe we ought to really get a vote of the veterans in the community and see how they feel about doing this. And we have a Veteran County Veteran Service Officer who maybe could do that, get all the veterans to vote whether they want it or not. And the second comment just has to do with the funding for it. I know the county has people that write grants, get grants for stuff the county wants done. And I'm not sure if the city does or not. But if you do, that's just another avenue to help pay for getting it done, because I know that's part of the issue. That's it. Thank you.
Richard Schuster?
Mayor and Council, I've lived here in town since '04 in many different roles, and I've served on some committees with several of you, solved a lot of issues for our community. And I appreciate you guys and what you do, doing this all the time and putting yourselves out there. And I would just say that there's times when you, because of where you're at and the education that you have with all the things that are going on, you have to have that bigger picture and understand that it's worth taking a stand and making it go right. I am absolutely in favor of the static aircraft in Veterans Park. We looked at some numbers. The salary out there at the base is $2.3 million per month injected into this community. The amount of money, it's in the hundreds of millions of dollars that's over the life of the aircraft. But this isn't just an aircraft. It's not, we're just not sticking a biplane out there. This is the air superiority aircraft. So when you talk about enforcing a no-fly zone overseas, which we see on the news all the time, that's what you created as Klamath Falls, was those student pilots and the ability to be able to have a no-fly zone. It is the air-to-air combat aircraft. So that's what we're memorializing. And we're memorializing the fact that our community has created those student pilots for the last two decades plus. We've been the only ones in the business for almost the last two decades. This started in 2015, when me and a couple other people worked with then-City Manager Nate Trapezky with his staff to get this thing approved, worked with the City Council then, pushed it through multiple agencies at the federal level. This has been a challenge multiple times. We've worked on it for seven years. And in 2020, we were able to bump this, our community up to number one, so that we could secure one of our aircraft to be able to be on this pedestal. Otherwise, if that doesn't happen, whatever aircraft retires when you become number one, we'll have to move it from whatever community that is. So if it's Barnes, if it's in Florida, that means it's going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars to break that aircraft down and bring it here. This is a huge cost savings if you ever want to have this memorial established, and I hope that you do. I would also say, I had a couple of folks that asked me, hey, what would happen if we turned this thing back in and then asked for another one down the road? I think you already know that answer. The folks that worked really hard on this since 2015, and especially during COVID, to get us bumped up to number one, it would be killed. They say that this is bad because the money shouldn't be for this type of an event, but it's for economic recovery. That's part of the definition of this money. And I would say absolutely, having that jet down there where you can see it on 97 and see what's going on downtown, it's going to bring people down into our community. It's exactly what that money's for. I would also say that, they said that it's because we shouldn't spend that kind of money. If that was the case, we would have people that are yelling at you guys about a dump truck for 230,000, or yelling at you about a median project up at OIT for 270,000. The reality is, it's not about money. There's a force here that wants to get rid of the military heritage that we have in this community, and I would say please stand up to them and please secure this for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremiah Boink? Jeremiah?
Mayor, Councilman, thank you for allowing me a chance to speak. I'm not originally from Klamath Falls. I moved here about three years ago. As you can tell by the symbols I wear on my vest, I am very heavily invested in the veterans community here. I myself am a Navy man, not an Air Force man. I think by wearing what I wear, to a lot of people who don't understand why we wear the things we wear, they're merely affectations. But these are common symbols shared among members of the veteran community. And though some of them on the back that some of you can read are probably tongue-in-cheek, they mean a lot to the rest of us. And I think this static display represents a great symbol for the veterans of this community. And I'm not sure if you're aware, here in Klamath County alone, the veteran population of Klamath County is six times the national average. I think it's something like less than 2% of every American serves in the military, and less than 1% of them actually serve in combat. And to have that much veteran representation present in this community and this county sends a brave message to the fact that veterans are heavily involved in this community. And I understand, we are here to practice democracy. Everyone who is a veteran here signed their name on the line to defend democracy. So the people who disagree with us, I fully support their right to disagree with this static display, as much as I disagree with them. But that is the blessing and the gift of democracy that we stood to defend. Everyone is entitled to their opinions and their beliefs, but I think this static display, despite the fact that our people who oppose it, there's going to be a great number of people that's going to bring this community together, and it'll be a focal point for community development within our city and within our county.
Very good.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak in favor of the static? Go ahead and come on up and just state your name, please.
My name is Gabriel Mainwaring, and my wife is sitting over there. I served four tours overseas. I've spent over three years of my life fighting. I've been combat wounded twice. My son serves in the military out at this base. There's two things that I think really matter in our community. And A, that we have our freedom and that we have the ability to do this as a public in front of you guys and speak our voices. We, as a community, need to stand up and back the base, but we need to back our veterans. And our veterans need all the support that they can get, and they need to have your support. And that's what we are asking for each and every one of you. And it's important for me, and I know that you guys don't know much about me other than I'm Christina's husband, but the simple fact is, is that we, as we look amongst all these veterans that are in here, if you're a veteran, raise your hand. We have a large, large support group here, and we want our voices heard. And we ask that you support the statics display, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. So there are six others that support, but were not here. Dennis and Lisa.
No, they're here.
Oh, they're here, but don't want to speak. So Dennis and Lisa Wolf, Leon T. Meek Rocky, James Hamilton, Darla Harmon, Tim Ebner, and Eric Harris. And they're all in support, but did not want to speak. So we will go on to...
Hold on just a second. So we're asking that these people speak. They're ones who wanted to speak on the bid waiver, but they're not specific to the findings. They need to speak now.
Okay. So we have people that would like to speak on the F-15 and the bid waiver as well. You need to specify, you need to speak now. So Chuck Wells? Thank you for doing this.
Madam Mayor, will we be having that discussion when the item comes up later in the agenda?
Only if it's specific to the findings.
Only if it's specific to the findings.
If they have specific findings, then they'll speak then, but otherwise, they need to speak now. So we need to find out that first. We need to find out if they have stuff that's specific to the findings on the contract issue.
So Chuck, will you be speaking about the bid waiver? Is that what you want to speak about?
I'm talking about, the council has already deferred the low, to the low bid waiver.
Okay, so that is about the bid waiver.
Is that adequate?
So I think Jonathan needs to speak on that?
I can come back up here if I'm in the wrong category.
Jonathan, City Manager. Could you, could you let them know what we're doing as far as...
Yeah, so as we come to the legislative action items, I'm trying to find which one this is. Okay, 6.1 is the exemption from the competitive bid requirements. It's actually not a waiver of the low bid requirements. But I understand, Mayor, that we will be, that will be a public meeting at that time?
A public hearing. So do you want to save that for the public hearing, Mr. Wells? Would you like to save that, your comments, for the public hearing?
Yes, sure.
Okay, sorry for dragging you up here arms. Okay, so the rest of those bid waivers, should we just wait? Okay. Jennifer Lucas?
Hello. Back again. I just wanted to see if you guys had had a chance to look over the Equity Task Force Resolution that you guys had signed two years ago? No? Okay. I just wanted to remind you that it's not something new. It's something that you guys had already 100% agreed to, and we're still waiting for some action on that. And it's, you know, it's been a long time in waiting for that, and we don't feel like it should be shirked off to the next council when that was already agreed upon by you guys. So I just wanted to remind you guys of that, and that it would be nice to keep things going forward instead of still pausing for yet someone else to then allow that to be. You guys made a commitment to us, and it should be followed. So that was all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Okay. Ed Selin. Ed? And this is... So Ed Selin.
Ed Selin, 5945, Alva, Klamath Falls. I've got to start out by saying I'm sick and tired of being lectured about what it takes to be a member of this community, that if we're not all for the military and for the base, we don't belong, we're marginal. And I'm really here to talk about Joey Gentry's initiative to begin, to establish an equity committee, because what it really boils down to is who is marginal and who is valued in this community. The racism and injustice are sometimes blatant. Hatred for the LGBT community, for example, a rainbow flag at the Friends Church repeatedly torn down. Last year, Sugar Man's Corner, Black Lives Matter demonstration, some guys roared past screaming the N-word at me, a privileged white guy, and other white folk on the corner. This is pure irrational hatred, deep and intense. Joey had been standing on that corner for months and facing worse. And what happened the other day at a tribal gathering was hatred was even worse than that. What we're talking about is white supremacy and fascism right under the surface here. A less obvious example is the naming of Yulalona Park. It was, obstacles were built, and it was approved over only after a Byzantine process. Quite a different story with the warplane. I was told on July 30th, 2022, that the project hasn't applied for funding, but that when it did, it would be vetted with any other applications for funding assistance. But in fact, we know that the process of vetting occurred after the funding. Vetting was brushed aside and turned on its head. Funding before vetting was the immediate unanimously approved without debate, and only later, when the project was dragged into daylight by the newspaper, did a caricature of vetting occur. It's for tourism. If we don't use it, we lose it. It's our patriotic duty. It's to honor the base. Funding first, and we'll justify it later. The obvious difference between the first and the second proposals was that the first came from the marginalized of our community, from the tribes. The second came from the power center that is represented here today. From the equity standpoint, this is so obviously a matter of bias. Equity means that all projects must be vetted in the same way. This means for this council that you must start over vetting the jet proposal in the same manner as the others.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yep. And if you can turn in your paperwork, we can make note of that. Thank you so much. Cleo Saye, or Chloe Saye?
Wacklisi Gawasasis, my name is Chloe Saye, and I reside on the homelands of the Klamath tribes. I'm going to paint a picture for you. Imagine yourself on a dirt road in the dark, under a blanket of beautiful stars, waiting patiently for the MODOC run staff to make its way to you. You can hear the deer toes on the run staff coming. It's your turn to run. You're running, running in prayer. As the stretch ends, you hand the run staffs off to the next person, and you continue to walk down the road to cool down. No lights, no cars, no people in sight. You start to hear some yelling, so you begin to listen, thinking it's laughter, war hoops, pure happiness coming from behind you, but you're listening and listening, and you can hear voices starting to escalate. You hear screaming, cussing, and what sounds like a possible altercation starting. You turn back, and you start to run towards the area it's coming from, because your kids are back there. All of our kids are back there. As you're running, all of a sudden, you hear shots being fired. Bang, 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 bang. Now you're running faster, giving everything you've got, because your kids are back there. All of our children are back there. When you get to the area all the vehicles are at, you see a tribe full of people protecting the children at all costs. Older children taken in and comforting the younger children that were in fear, crying, frantically looking, and calling out for their parents, as parents were running back in panic, not knowing the fate of our children. This is the racism that we face on our prayer run on October 14th, 2022. I am the mother of an 11-year-old girl and a six-year-old boy who were in a pickup on a public dirt road where this took place. I have children that can describe to me what this man looked like, what he was wearing, and to me, that is too close for comfort. I have another child that just keeps asking me why. There were some children who showed no fear and thought this was no big deal. It's absolutely sickening to think about. Indigenous children shouldn't have to live in fear, nor think it's okay or that this isn't a big deal. I will not accept this as a norm for our children or for our future generations to come. I am Pia. I'm the mother of two beautiful indigenous children who have faced and been facing racism right here in Klamath County. I've had a lot of thoughts going in and through my mind, just thinking of coming to speak in front of you today. Like, do I say my kids' name? Do I bring them here so you can see they're innocent children? But today, I decided for their protection that I wouldn't give their names and I wouldn't show their faces, but that I would show up and be their voice. In my six-year-old's words, "What would you do, Mom?" And in my words, "What are we going to do as a community to address racism right here in Klamath County?" Thank you.
Thank you. If you've got a statement, we could take it from here. Thank you. Ann Wilson?
Good evening. My name's Ann Wilson. I live in this community, born and raised, graduated from KU, went to OIT. I am so tired of hearing the constant questions from Ms. Lucas here and from Joey and others when I ask, "What's going on with the Equity Committee? What's going on? There's no help. It's still happening." And they say, "We keep asking, and nothing happens." Nothing happens. Nothing happens to you, but it keeps happening to us. It keeps happening to us. We get the Snide comments. We get the slow unease. We get the look-down when we're in the store. You're not getting it, we're getting it. And maybe I have to start coming here every meeting and asking to have blank faces and empty answers. When you agreed to that, it meant action should occur, yet nothing has happened. Nothing. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of it. It's going to be on you when something catastrophic happens in this community, and you're going to be out there with all the prayers, thoughts and prayers, like you see with every other community around here that faces violence. And to that, I will say BS. It's on you to not act. Come on! And if you're not going to think about it in a way that you should, which is morally right, then think about it in a dollar's way, because the run that Chloe talked about brought in many people who filled up their tanks and their trucks with the gas in our town multiple times over several days. They purchased hotel rooms, they purchased food, they bought their supplies for the run in this community. So think about it from a dollar perspective, if that's what it takes for you to take action. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Because the run that Chloe talked about brought in many people who filled up their tanks and their trucks with the gas in our town multiple times over several days. They purchased hotel rooms, they purchased food, they bought their supplies for the run in this community. So think about it from a dollar perspective, if that's what it takes for you to take action. Thank you.
Alexander?
Zendejas.
Zendejas. Alexander Dejendes. Hello.
My name is Alex Zendejas. I have been a citizen of Clamath Falls for six years. I've come here today to ask you to establish a permanent Equity Committee. In July of this year, a small group of local community organizers put together a pride event in Veterans Park. This event was largely welcomed by the Clamath Falls community with love and acceptance. But there was a very local and angry group of residents who rejected this event with fear and superstition. Violent threats were made to organizers and attendees. Conspiracy theories of child grooming and exploitation were shared at big community gatherings. And at the pride event, hate preachers hurled slurs at attendees and let everyone there know that they would burn in eternal damnation. The divide in this community bubbled up to the surface again, just as it had in June of 2020 during a BLM protest, the very event that established the first Equity Task Force. The only reason it didn't turn into the same was the city seemed to learn one lesson from the last and sent an army of police officers to enforce peace. But this is not a solution. It's a Band-Aid on a gaping wound, a wound that can only be healed by action. This council began taking action when they established the task force to examine local issues of racial and social fairness and advise this council on ways to make Clamath Falls more equitable. In December of the same year, this council passed a resolution stating it was committed to making equity a guiding principle in its decisions. But less than a year later, you have disbanded the task force whose goal was just that. So I ask why? Why must people come to so many of these meetings and constantly remind you of your promise to this community? Words are easy, but the citizens of this city require more if we are ever to know peace. As a member of the Clamath community, I urge you to see that it is essential that you establish a permanent Equity Committee and hold true to your word. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Whitney. Is Jeremy Whitney here?
Is it Jasmine Whitney?
I'm sorry. Is it Jasmine?
It could be. It's missing.
I guess it...
It has to be.
If it's, yes, if it's you, I'm so sorry.
Looks like Jeremy.
Sorry.
That's okay. On September 10th, 2021, the Equity Committee received a letter from the City Council saying their work here is done. You see, the City of Clamath Falls is in desperate need of a group now. A strong diversified committee who can speak up against the disparities we commonly see here in town. Being a person of color, whose mother can identify as black, I want our troubles to be heard openly and in a serious manner. I want our voices to be heard. We need more resources to combat race, age, gender, handicap, and sexual orientation discrimination in this town, and we want to feel safe using those resources. It's the experiences over hundreds of people in this town have had. An Equity Committee would bring forward a community of people who needs to share the experiences, make people who would speak up and feel less alone. You would finally hear about these disparities and injustices and equities and overall problems, keeping this town oppressed, depressed, and unwelcoming, so you can finally do something about it and change the old ways. It's not too late to change and to make a change for the better in this town. We are ready. We're ready to feel welcomed, to feel safe, secure, important, like we matter because our voices need to be heard and we do really matter in this town, yet sometimes we feel like we don't, and that's not fair. So I ask the City Council today, where is our promised Equity Committee to hear our voices today? And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to add one question of one of the representatives. I keep hearing City of Clamath Falls. Isn't this an urban and county problem? Isn't this a problem for the entire area? Is it just specific to the city?
We live in the city. We live here.
Because you keep asking the city to do this, so that, you know, maybe I'm off-base. But it seems to me like this should be the county if you want that type of task force. I can't help but believe this doesn't want...
Excuse me. Just, you were just stating...
Go ahead.
Okay. So Christina Pascal...
Pas...
Pascellis?
I don't know. None of them.
Did you talk about the jet display?
That's okay. Yes.
She didn't put it on there, so I didn't know.
You didn't specify, so that is fine.
Ask her if it's about the findings.
Is it about the findings in the hearings or just a comment?
It's about September 6th agenda, where it was tabled, this procurement method for the F-15. Are you ready or no?
What was that? That's fine. Go ahead.
City councils, City Council members and mayor, the issue before the council today, should the City Council, as the Contract Review Board, approve a resolution allowing the city to use a special procurement method for the F-15 static display project? The issue, worded exactly the same, was on your September 6th agenda. In the updated agenda for September 6th on Clamath Falls City website, the following is recorded. Dan Tofel moved to table this issue. It was seconded by Mika Blaine and the motion carried with Phil Studenberg, Mika Blaine, and Dan Tofel voting yes. Why is this same issue before the City Council again after being tabled? The September discussion among the members was about tabling this until after the 1st of the year, given the low member count and the apparent lack of information among the public regarding this project. What is happening here? I and others have made statements objecting to the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for this project. I, as well as others, believe this would be a misuse of ARPA funds. Elected community officials have not provided any evidence to prove that this display will remedy any of the harm caused by the pandemic, nor have officials done anything to solicit public input. This is an amazing lack of transparency regarding this jet installation project. Has the city or county done any assessment of how our community has been impacted by COVID-19? Does this council know who or what has been most impacted by COVID-19 pandemic? If such a report exists, let us know where we can access it. I have heard those of us speaking out against this project are being labeled anti-Clamath. Nothing could be further from the truth. Those of us trying to halt this project believe it's a misuse of our community funds, and while many of us have our own ideas of how ARPA funds could be spent, I think most of us agree that we want these funds to be spent in ways that reduce the harm caused by COVID-19 in our community, just as these funds were intended to do. Anybody who is concerned about how ARPA funds are being spent in our community can contact U.S. Treasury Department Special Inspector General for Pandemic Recovery, Brian D. Miller. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sarah Silverman.
First off, I'm a little confused because I was here last Wednesday with a joint meeting between the council and the commissioners, and I thought it was established at that point that the placement of the static monument and the whole issue would be tabled until after the November election, until after January, when a new council was seated. So I think it's a little misleading for the general public that they did not know that that was going to be on tonight's agenda. I'm mainly here to speak and question why it is that the findings of the Equity Task Force, a committee formed over two years ago on the recommendation of this council, not the county, the city, has never been adopted. There were 12 points to that. I'm unaware if any of those have been adopted. And why is it that whenever Joey Gentry stands here and simply inquires, everyone is mute, like you can see through her? As a spectator, I find it very uncomfortable. In July of 2020, in a broadcast interview on our local NBC affiliate, Mayor Westfall herself stated that she believed the Equity Task Force could serve as a starting point to social equity. So we ask, where are we in that process? Has it been terminated, tabled, or forgotten? We all deserve a response to this reasonable and timely question. Thank you.
Thank you.
These are related to that. I just want to note that they were received. Unless somebody here wants to speak for her, but that's...
So we do have a note from Joey Gentry and Jonathan Shinjerry also have some statements For...
Equity Task.
For the Equity Task Force. And that we will be putting those in the notes. Yes.
Mayor Westfall, I wanted to use my three minutes here to talk about the Equity Committee.
Okay. We're still having open public comment, so I'll be calling on anybody else that wants to speak. You can come up at that time. Or you do have a note here, Sally. So...
She wanted to speak on the bid waiver.
Yours was under bid waiver? You want to speak? Yours was under bid waiver? Would you like to come up and speak now?
No, I didn't put it under bid waiver. I didn't put it under any.
Maybe somebody else put bid waiver on it. Sorry.
Was that Darla Stone?
No, it's Sally Wells. Sorry for that.
I'm Sally Wells. I live at 820 North Eldorado in Clamath Falls. I'm here for the public hearing on the contract waiver, and I'll have more to say on that during the public hearing. But I want to use my free three minutes here to ask why the council has been totally unresponsive to Joey Gentry's repeated requests for information on the formation of an Equity Committee. I surely hope that your lack of response to an indigenous person's concern is not an example of why an Equity Committee is crucial in our community. Did you plan to put a permanent Equity Committee in place? Have you changed your minds? Whatever the truth is, Joey Gentry is owed a response. At your joint meeting with the commissioners, Derek made the comment that this is a military town. That actually was the first time I had heard that, but I have heard Clamath Falls called a timber town, a cattle town, a railroad town, and there are probably more, all of which are part of the whole, but they are divisive and exclusionary in tone. Chuck and I have lived in the basin for 40 years and in Clamath Falls for the last 11. We love and are very connected to this place. As we have grown old here, we receive acts of kindness almost every day. In our case, the city of Sunshine, another identifier, is also the city of kindness. I really would like to insist that you address that same kindness and responsiveness to Joey.
Thank you. Thank you. And would you like to... Sally? Sally? Would you like to submit your statement?
Yeah, thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not turned in their paper?
I didn't.
You can still come up.
Did I call this person? I didn't call this person. I find divisiveness sad in many ways, and it seems like we naturally migrate towards it. And to start pitting military people against townspeople, trying to define that we're separate, kind of hurts my heart. And my brother served in Vietnam. In fact, his hair turned white in two weeks. He saw such trauma. And my dad served in World War II and came back a changed man, I'm sure, for my mom. I'm not against the military people who have served. I honor them. And at the same time, this is back to the jet. I feel like having the jet back, if it's being considered back in Veterans Park, would be a grievous mistake. And I think partially entering into the city seeing a jet is kind of heartbreaking. It's a heartbreaking thing to me. So I would beg that maybe we somehow, if we do need to go through and put this jet up, that we would really seriously consider it, being in some place and really, and honor the people that have served. I can't imagine laying my life on the line. I honor that. It brings me to tears. So I don't want to dishonor them, and I wish they would know that. It's just that for me, and I go to that park almost every day with my dog, it's just not right for that space. Thank you.
Thank you. And...
What was her name?
Yes. Were you Monica? Are you Monica?
Yeah.
Monica. Come on up, please.
What was her name?
And your name?
Madeline Blake.
Thank you.
Mayor Westfall?
Yes.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but there is a gentleman on Zoom who was typing a comment, and I just wanted to read it into the record.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Can we do it just right after?
Whenever it's appropriate for you.
Very good. Thank you. We'll do that. Go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Monica Super. Mayor Westfall, you might remember me as Monica Yellowell. I know I stood before this podium two years ago. When you issued a proclamation for the Modoc Ancestral Run, deeming a second week of October in 2020 or '21 as Modoc Ancestral Run Week, we just came off of the Modoc Ancestral Run. This was our 12th year in this prayer run. And I'm here today. I wrote a whole bunch of notes, but I decided I'm not going to do that. I'm going to stand up here and talk to you, woman to woman. Because when you gave that proclamation to our people, I held a lot of trust that there would be, that was the first step and a lot of follow-through that might come after that. And I remember there were some gifts of kindness that were attached to that, like you provided a meal for us on the run. And I remember our elder was with us that day, and I told her, "You know who provided this meal? The mayor of Clamath Falls." And it brought her to tears because she felt like there would be some healing once in her life, and she was in her 70s when I told her that. But this last weekend on the run, when we were coming through peacefully, you know, we stayed the night at Council Grove where the treaty was signed, and we were welcomed with open arms by a landowner there. You know, that land doesn't belong to us anymore. But that landowner extended her grace to us to allow us to camp there and put a sweat lodge there and go into ceremony. We woke up at sunrise and we greeted the sun and we started on our prayer run. And when we got to the city of Clamath Falls, and we were on public roads, we heard, "Get the fuck off our property, you fucking Indians." And those things continued to happen until we crossed the county, the state line. An angry gunman came out of his home and opened fire, closing a public access gate to us. And all we were there doing was praying. See, I teach a lot of cultural awareness training in this community to a lot of agencies, and I talk about pre and post contact and the impacts and effects of historical trauma on our people. I'm 47 years old, and the average age of death in my family is 51. My entire paternal family is deceased. That is transgenerational genetic impacts of historical trauma that we wake up with as indigenous people every day. Nobody up here does. We do. And we can't even prey on our homeland without being met with racism and gun violence. This is the second year we were met with gun violence on public roads. You see all of that historical trauma? I ask, every time I teach it, I say, "What is the mathematical equation that tells me how much pain has occurred?" the mathematical equation that tells me how much pain has occurred with all of our loss of land, all of our loss of language, all of our way of life, the stealing of our children? Add it up. What is the total? You know, nobody can come up with that. But for some reason, indigenous people have to come up with the equation of how to walk out of this historical trauma. And who is helping us? Because this history is ours. It's not just, it's ours. It's not just us to do the heavy lifting. So do the heavy lifting.
Thank you.
Does a representative want to come up and read the statement from Joey? It'd be great.
Mayor, I thought we were going to...
Oh, I'm sorry. Very good. Thank you for reminding me. Go ahead, Christina. We're just going to wait one moment.
So this is Ken Sandusky. And Mr. Sandusky has asked me to direct his comments directly to Councilman Tofel, and so I am just following his request. So bear that. To the question about why the question of violence against Modoc people belongs in front of city council is found in history, please tell me what role the Linkville regulars played in the Modoc War and the atrocities, where do people in acting modern attacks shop or gather to share their hate and up for their outbursts? Then it was responded with, excuse my finger slip, but you get my point that Clamath Falls is the hub of the area and from where this energy centers. My message is specific to the gentleman's question.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we do have the two letters. If you would like to come up, please.
Yeah. Okay, so she says, Dear Mayor Westfall and City Council, I am unable to attend in person tonight, but would like to acknowledge that we live, work, play, farm, ranch, and conduct our businesses on homelands of Clamath, Modoc, Youskin, Peot peoples. I'm so sorry. Peot peoples. It has been almost two years since the Clamath Falls City Council unanimously approved the Equity Resolution that promised the citizens of Clamath Falls the formation of a permanent Equity Committee. Where is the committee? Sorry. It is not acceptable to break the promise of an Equity Committee that was made to our entire community. You promised the committee would provide representation and a seat at the table for Black, Indigenous, people of color, the LGBTQ community, people with disabilities, the working class, and other economically marginalized folks. Broken treaties, broken promises. You counselors promised to break the cycle of oppression, discrimination, racism, and corruption. You did so with a formal resolution that has legal, moral, and ethical responsibility to implement and execute. Where is the Equity Committee? Please do not wait or defer to the newly elected counselors to execute this plan, this promise. Please show the incoming counselors that the formation of the Equity Committee is a priority for the community and a promise to be upheld. No more broken treaties, no more broken promises. I anticipate that others are in chamber tonight sharing their stories, which reaffirm the urgent and dire need for you to honor the promise you made to our community. Please know that the one common thread amongst us all who continue to push for equity and representation is we desire a safe, welcoming, prosperous community for all, one in which we do not merely just exist, but one in which we all people can thrive. We will thrive as a community when each of us thrives as individuals. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Excellent.
Christina, do you have a Norma Jean Cummings online?
I do not really have him. Send up Sandusky.
Okay. And so we just had a note from her. All righty. Anybody else wishing to speak during public comment? Come on. Come on up. Not a problem. If you can just state your name, please, we'll give you three minutes.
Okay. Jeannie McNair. I sit on Clamath Tribal Council. And I came here, I sat in the back there, and I was watching people as they spoke. And then I was kind of looking around at everybody that's talking and sitting there, just rolling their eyes, maybe. But I've lived here. I'm 64 years old. I was born and raised here. And I've been on council for a few years, and I've heard a lot of things. And maybe you know some of council members, but it's very important that we live here together. I don't care if some of these folks out here just moved from California, which I don't like moving in our area, but they do. But what was said from Monica and others here, there is a lot of race, and it hasn't stopped. Like I said, I'm 64 years old, and I remember when I was a kid, when I was in high school, when I was in college, I heard the same stuff. And it starts with you people sitting up there. And I believe you as an ex-cop, I was watching your composure, and it wasn't too nice. There's a police officer sitting there. And I'm thinking, what they're thinking about, you know? They're probably tired of hearing Indians this, Indians that. But I've heard it all. And some people may be forgiving. I try to be forgiving, but when I hear something that went on, a landowner shooting, especially on a public road, that's not, that's not good at all. And I don't know if some of these people here agree with a landowner doing that thing, especially when there's children. How would they feel if their children was out there? They wouldn't like it. The cops would have probably been out there in 10 seconds. When I called them, it took them four hours to get out to Chillicothe because my home was vandalized. And they weren't, they said they didn't like coming out there. So there has to be some agreement between city, council, our tribe, on what we can do. So far, I haven't seen nothing done. And I don't like politics. I really don't, because it's a bunch of shit. Sorry. But we all need to sit down and figure something out, because right now, it's not doing any good, not helping anybody in this county. I want to take a look at everybody's faces, because they probably won't like me because of what I said. But that's okay. Yes, I'm Indian. I'm an elder. I like Clamath County. Some people may not like it. But like I said, where it starts is with you people, because you're the ones sitting up there. And I'm sitting on our council bench as well. And we hear it, but nothing's ever done. So that's where we need to get started.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Nathaniel Wright. I'm a member of the Clamath Tribes, and I reside in Chillicothe, Oregon. I'm here because I witnessed the violence towards our people from the landowner, or whatever he was, during our prayer ceremony. You know, I'm still, I'm here to back up my family and my friends, you know, Monica and Chloe and everybody that has the courage to stand up here and speak. I am a man that's in recovery. I'm not afraid to admit it, you know? I've been sober for five years from alcohol and from drugs. And I had to leave Clamath County in order to do that up in Portland and reside up there away from my home and away from my family, you know? Now, I'm just like anybody else, a single, I'm a single dad, you know, and I just want to raise my daughter around love and around encouragement and have her do a hell of a lot better than I did. And that's why I come to these prayer ceremonies, you know, for our people. You know, they're still out there suffering. You know, that's what we want to pray for, you know, that one day they'll join us out there. So just like Chloe said, I was the person that she passed the staff to. You know, we had to run over a mile when we heard those gunshots, and we didn't know what we were going to run onto. We didn't know if we were going to get shot, too. We didn't know if our kids are going to be laying their shot, or our elders, or Monica, one of our good leaders in our community that has the courage to stand up and speak for us, you know? So another thing is that I know that guy didn't have any consequences from the cops, you know? And so that's another thing that just continues, is going to continue to happen. These people out there, they don't have no consequences. They don't get in trouble, you know? But if it was one of us, we'd be in cuffs, you know? My daughter also told me that she heard that man call us stupid Indians, you know? That ain't right, you know? So I'm just glad that we still have our community here and that we are teaching our kids love. We're teaching our kids that they're not stupid Indians, that they're not worthless, you know, that they can have, stand up for themselves and be proud of who they are, you know, because we're lucky to be here after all the genocide and all the trauma and all the things that we go through, you know? And I don't want to speak hate. I don't want to point fingers, but I do just want to be heard tonight, and that's why I came. So thank you, guys.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Good evening. My name is Leah Murray. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I was inspired by all my family and friends back there. I was in the truck the night that fire was open. It's going to be short and sweet. I want you to look at my daughter's face, who I was holding milk on chance we're fired. And for those of you who thinking this isn't serious, look at my baby's face and tell her that, because I could have easily lost my baby that night, along with all of our kids. So I ask you tonight, where is this Equity Council? And while each and every one of you think about it, look at my baby's face. Think of the generations to come, because we've come so far, but we face so much racism in this town. I am lucky enough to be adopted into a white family. I'm lucky enough to be light-skinned. My daughter is, too. But there's many of us that aren't that lucky. That night could have ended very differently. So like I said, I ask you, I ask you to look at my daughter's face. And where is this Equity Council? Because if it was one of your children, you'd be just as angry as we are. You'd be just as scared. Look at her face and remember it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Brandy Hatcher, and I was born and raised here in Clamath County. I'm a tribal member. I sit on the Clamath Tribes Tribal Council as a treasurer. I have for the past 20-some years. It was brought to my attention this morning about what happened, and I have to applaud Monica, all of our tribal people that are here, and our council members that are here. We're all a part of this community. I don't care what color you are, what race, what sex, whatever. We're all a part of this community. And I heard about the Equity Committee, and I find it interesting that you had a meeting with the commissioners. I think if you're going to have equity in this community, all of our councils, all of our boards need to meet and come together and work together. And God forbid, nothing happened, there was no tragedies out there. I have a one-year-old grandson, and that would adjust. I feel for you. So thank you for sharing, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else wishing to speak? Anybody online? Christine?
No, ma'am. Still, Sam Sandusky.
All righty. Seeing and hearing nobody else, we will close that public comment portion out of our meeting.
If anybody would like to go at this time, we're going to continue with our meeting. You're welcome to go and/or stay.
Did you need some water, Nicole?
No.
You don't need anything. Yeah. All righty. We're going to continue with the Consent Agenda 5.1, the approval of the Consent Agenda meeting agenda and prayer meeting minutes, October 3, 2022, provided under a separate sheet. 5.2 is the September 2022 project update for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade.
I'll move to approve the Consent Agenda.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six, the general public hearing, 6.1, a resolution granting an exemption from the competitive bid requirements for the use of the construction manager/general contractor method of procurement. And city manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and citizens. The public hearing scheduled this evening is for limited purpose, specifically to authorize an alternate contracting method to design and construct a jet display at the location to be determined by the city and county. In this case, the question is if the council will allow the city to use the construction manager slash general contractor method of contracting and to issue a request for proposals. While some in the audience may wish to share their views about the project itself, now is not the appropriate time. The authorization for allocation of funds occurred during the regular city council meeting held on May 16, 2022. The city council, exercising its authority as a contract review board, has the ability to approve the use of specific methods of contracting or to approve exemptions from specific methods for specific projects. Such authority comes from state statutes, as well as the city's public contracting regulations, which were adopted in conformance with state law. The framework for the public hearing is as follows. Staff shall make its presentation and put forth the proposed findings. Mayor will open the public hearing. Those who wish to speak in support of the contract method approval process may make their statements. Those who wish to speak in opposition to the contract method approval process may make their statements. Neutral comments may be made, if any. Again, comments both in support or opposition to the CMGC contracting method should be directed at specific issues related to the proposed findings. A speaker should clearly identify which findings they are addressing, and will be limited to three minutes. After the public statement, staff will have an opportunity to respond to the challenged findings. Once the public hearing is concluded, the mayor will close the hearing and the record, and council will have the option to adopt the findings as proposed, amend the proposed findings, and adopt them as amended or deny the findings.
Very good. Thank you. So I will open the public hearing at this point. Anybody in support?
Staff report first.
Oh, sorry. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So as was noted, City Council Policy 2-100, Public Contracting Regulations, sets out how the city may procure contracts for public improvements. Typically, the city puts a project out to bid and awards contract to the lowest responsible bidder. Unlike most public works projects, the proposed F-15 static display has many unique features, including, but not limited to, transportation of the aircraft, anchoring and securing it to its permanent... including, but not limited to, transportation of the aircraft, anchoring and securing it to its permanent location, and other smaller items like how you configure the aircraft, what items need to be removed and/or covered, things of that nature. Due to the complexity of the project, we are proposing to use a CMGC method. In a situation such as this, Oregon Revised Statute allows municipalities to enter into this type of contracting to procure and to perform this type of work. In order to do so, Council must hold a public hearing and make particular findings about the project and the proposed course of action. In this case, the main purpose would be to ensure that people designing the project and the people who will likely be building the project work together and partner with the city to overcome any specific challenges that might come up. With that, you have any questions?
Questions, comments?
Just for note, record purposes, the findings were included in the package, so you have them for review, so that's what should be addressed.
I just, I have one question.
Counselor Blaine.
This is just the process. This doesn't uh, this is the actual process on the contracting itself and what the bid would be and what their their costs would be, essentially, correct?
So that is correct. It is basically getting a contractor involved with the design process to try to troubleshoot and come up with solutions to any of these problems to reduce any potential costs or delays or issues that might arise.
And is it specific to the Veterans Park location? I mean, I don't know that we'll change it, I'm not speaking for anyone else, but it's not specific to any?
It is not specific to any location, it's just specific to being able to
The project itself.
Yeah, uh, the design process itself.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't hold us any overspending or?
Josh Mundein can add some more clarity to that.
As a matter of fact, um, it kind of controls the spending is 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 our goal. We're, we know we're dealing with a sensitive budget, and bringing the contractor onboard early helps us stay within a reasonable budget. We do a lot of estimating along the way.
Any more comments or questions? At this point, I'd like to open it up to um the public hearing. So, we have um any in support of the findings. Anybody wishing to speak, come online.
I would like to speak in support of this method. The main reason is that not only does it give them control over what happens on the aircraft, uh, the protection of of the whole project itself, but all of us that work anywhere around the government, we know that it's not always the best plan to go with the lowest bidder, uh, to have them involved with this, and this is going to protect them from all of that. So uh, when when we look at some of the costs on this, uh, it it's really small for what the community gets for the next hundred years. Um, and I and I keep in my mind, thinking about the uh, the difference between it and a median project that are almost exactly the same amount of money uh, that's allocated, but i- if we have to pull curbing out later on, it's no big deal. But with this, this gives them the control they absolutely need to make sure that the quality is done upfront. And so I would actually uh, very much support them uh, getting this way of moving forward so that they have the control with uh, an expert to be able to identify problems early, which always saves money in the end. So, thank you very much.
Very good. Anybody else in support of the findings?
Mayor, Council, Edwin Tui, again, I'd like to speak in uh, support that you grant the exemption. I think uh, however arcane the process, your vote would be viewed as either a tacit support or non-support of the project. And I ask you to apply your understanding, your community's support or lack thereof that project, and apply your vote uh, thereto. So please vote in support, in what I feel reflects that of your constituents in your community.
Very good. Anybody else in support of the findings? Anybody online? Okay, okay, now we will go into the um opposed to the findings. Anybody in opposed to the findings? Chuck or Chuck Wells, please? Where's Chuck? Where's Chuck? It's just Sally.
We have that noted.
Have that noted.
Are you Darla Silling?
Okay, Darla.
Good evening, my name is Chuck Wells. And I have a procedural question. And it has to do with, the Council, I say, has already deferred the low bid waiver. In Council's September sixth meeting, a motion was made, seconded and passed, that tabled any action on the Air Guard fifteen F-15 fighter monument until the new year, when a new and full Council can consider its location and presentation. Therefore, any action to implement contract arrangements such as waiving the low bid requirement is procedurally, I think, out of order, as per the county procedures and state statutes. That will have to be checked. In the Combined City Council and Board of County Commissioners Work Session on October twelfth, a proposal was made by Commissioner David Hensley to consider the fairgrounds as an alternate site for the Air Guard Monument. It would be on county property, and so the B O C C would become the project manager and operator. To do this, the current MOU would have to be rescinded and a new MOU signed. During the discussion, a two-member working group was formed to discuss the potential implementation of this alternative, the desirability of the site, and its feasibility. Since the final sighting has yet to be determined, any contract negotiation or award utilizing a low bid waiver would be inappropriate at this juncture. Final sighting of the display will determine specifications for monument and foundation design, construction specifications, time schedule, and cost estimates. An alternate sighting would also provide the open space required for optimum viewing effect and a proper interpretive facility space to celebrate the presence of the contribution of the Air National Guard in Clamath County and the F-15 display. Currently, an interested public is considering the more economically attractive and inclusive ecotourism infrastructure proposal as presented to the Council on September sixth. Due to the lack of transparency during the development of this project and the lack of response to public comment questions, and those who have expressed concerns in letters to the editor, the City Council meetings, and in community at large, need to have answers to their questions concerning the legality of expenditure, federal and state funding for this project. Thank you, Chuck Wells, U.S. Coast Guard nineteen forty-three to forty-six.
And thank you. Just for clarity, it was untabled on um the next meeting. The the item was untabled. So Edward Selins. You've already handed, okay. Did you want it back then? Do you have Edward's? Okay, that was Chuck's. You've got it.
I'll just give them all back, and then you can find and then send them back in when you're done. Thank you.
I'm Ed Sewing again, and I oppose granting the waiver for three reasons. First, if this is to qualify as a meaningful public hearing, the issues must be presented in context, in plain language. Instead of abstract murky terms, there should be more lead time, and the meeting time and place should be widely and publicly disseminated. Second, cost estimates must be clearly laid out in justification for the waiver. But the fact is, nobody has a clue what the cost of the project will be, as Chuck Wells so cogently points out. Given that there is no specific cost accounting, this waiver is not just about flexibility in bidding, but an open door to the novel funding model of throwing six hundred thousand into the air and seeing where it lands. Cost overruns are virtually guaranteed. This approach would flunk Business One-O-One. Taxpayers have a right to expect careful and serious cost accounting. Finally, the whole project is a misguided priority. Active service members in this room should pay attention to the words of Vietnam combat veteran echoing the position of many veterans I have spoken to. I quote, "As long as there are veterans on the street, it's wrong to use COVID relief money for a jet." Further, quote, "If the project goes through, at least City Council," this is his words, not mine, I wouldn't be so so mean about it. "City Council members will get their names on a plaque commemorating a jet on a stick. And veterans in need can still go to White City, so convenient, instead of being helped here in Clamath Falls." Veterans should be asked how they would prefer to be honored by expanded services or a static just jet display. I ask again, slow down, give the community a voice at a general public forum. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Sally Wells. Sally Wells? Would you like to speak?
I I don't have anything prepared. Uh, is there room here for question and answer, a little back and forth?
No.
No, not at all. So how do I get my questions answered?
This is, I mean, this is public hearing, it's to, it's to, it's to deal with the findings that have been presented, so.
Since this is dealing with the findings that have been presented, so that is the only thing that um you could speak on. So you would either be in opposition or support of it?
I don't know.
Right.
I think I'm probably in opposition for the reasons that Ed and Chuck have put forward.
Right.
Madam Mayor, this is a public hearing to address two council staffs available all month long. I'd be glad to visit with you, Sally, at your convenience.
Okay, thank you.
Be appropriate. So, a neutral in regard to the findings, anybody neutral in regards to the findings? And anybody online? Okay, seeing and hearing nobody, we're gonna close the record for public hearing. Any additional questions or comments?
I don't have any additional questions. I think um I'll move to introduce the resolution by title only. I think I'd like to get the contract started and get the process started.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? City Manager Jonathan Tiger, please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution granting an exemption from the com- competitive bid requirements for use of the Construction Manager slash General Contractor Method of Procurement.
Move to approve the resolution.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Tocall?
Yes.
Counselor Steenburgh?
Yes.
Counselor Blaine?
Yes.
Okay, passed. Six point two, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three biannual budget period. And we'll give you a moment to thank you. Did I already read it all? Okay, I'm going to read it again. Six point two, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three biannual budget period within the General Fund, Downtown Maintenance District Fund and Economic Development Property Fund. Finance Director Jessica Lindsay reviewing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This supplemental budget is focused on the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Um, those projects that you have already approved and we have final amounts on. There's some other projects that have not been um, we're still out to bid and don't have final amounts to be able to bring forward to budget, but this covers um, the police radios, the campus drive median landscaping, um, the banners and trash cans for downtown, the um additional facade grants, and the donation for Friends of the Children. Since um some of the changes in the budget are over ten percent of the budget, it does require a public hearing for this supplemental budget.
Questions or comments? I'm gonna open it up for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this agenda item? Can do so at this point. And seeing and hearing nobody, we will continue. And we will close the public hearing. Go ahead.
I'll move to introduce the title or the resolution by title only, or read by title only, excuse me.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Manager Jonathan Tiger, please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution adopting a supplemental budget for the biannual budget period twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three within the General Fund, Downtown Maintenance District Fund, and Economic Development Property Fund.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Tocall?
Yes.
Counselor Steenburgh?
Yes.
Counselor Blaine?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Six point three, an ordinance amending City Code Section seven point two four zero and seven point two five zero concerning the location of the psilocybin service centers first reading.
I'm not entirely sure how to say the word. I'm gonna say psilocybin.
Psilocybin, sorry.
This is a matter that City Attorney Mike Swanson had brought to City Council's attention. In the fall of twenty twenty, I believe, Oregon voters approved the administration of psilocybin in controlled medical settings. There is some question as to where that is to occur. Uh, the city does have the opportunity to limit time, place, and manner, similar to as we do for marijuana retailers. So, this comes into effect January one. Timing was very important to have an ordinance, first reading, second reading, and effective prior to that time. So what staff put together is a code amendment that adds a definition for psilocybin service center to Section seven point two four oh of code. And then additionally, largely just swaps in or adds the word psilocybin service center to everywhere where it's indicated as marijuana facility within the existing code section. Um, I will note, there is room for additional modification in the future based on Council's direction. I think at this time, we wanted to have something on the books prior to Jan. one. So as there aren't areas that are allowed, that then are no longer allowed by a later action. Um, there is some additional conversation, maybe up at the campus area. There might be some fine tuning, tailoring on some of the allowable uses or zones. Uh, but at this point, simply adding the term psilocybin service center to everywhere that marijuana facility is located and having the same buffer and locational standards for it.
Questions, comments?
I think it's a great idea, and it's a good uh, first step, as you say, and we can always modify it and tinker with it as uh, we see how it goes. But I I I feel the marijuana uh regulation has worked pretty well, and I think this will do the same.
Any questions, comments on that? Um, I'm going to open it up for public hearing at this point. Anybody wishing to speak on this agenda item? Can do so at this point. Anybody online? Okay, seeing and hearing nobody, we will close the public hearing portion out.
I would move to approve the proposed ordinance for first reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Please read the 7.1, the purchase of a...
Didn't we actually finish that, though? Didn't we need...
He read, no, he, we took the vote, and then he read it.
Yeah.
And then it was only introduced for first reading.
It'll come up again.
It'll come back again.
Yeah.
So, 7.1, the purchase of a 2023 Freightliner 10-yard dump truck with a plow from Premier Truck Group in an amount not to exceed $230,640. And we have streets and equipment manager Chuck Cox.
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm here tonight to ask for permission to, or authorization, to make this purchase on this next 10-yard truck. We have a 1996, which is pretty well dilapidated, hard to get parts for, so this is just to regenerate and to keep our fleet newer and keep our operation moving forward.
How many dump trucks do we have?
This will be our third new 10-yard dump truck, and we have three other older ones that will be coming online for replacement soon.
Okay.
And two 5-yard dump trucks, both four-wheel drive.
Okay.
For snow removal.
All right. Is that enough dump trucks, or what is enough?
That would be enough.
Oh, good.
Mayor, I move that we authorize option number one.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good.
At least it wasn't controversial.
Yet, yet.
Yeah. Night's not over with.
7.2, second memorandum of understanding, MOU, allowing for the time extension between the city of Clamath Falls and Clamath County for special contract under the city code section 4.370 for water resale. And we have water distribution manager Robbie West.
Counselor and mayor, as most of you know, back in July, we had our first MOU with the county on this dry well matter. In the joint session last week, we got some direction to maybe do some brainstorming with the county and maybe try it from a different direction, but until then, our MOU expires in October, into this month, so this is just a simple request to see if we could extend that memorandum for another year until we come up with a different solution, if that's a possibility. Obviously, staff would recommend that we move forward with council option one. I'm here for any questions, if you guys have them.
Very good. Questions, comments?
I'll move to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to execute a second memorandum of understanding with Clamath County, allowing for a time extension for providing water to county residents with dry well issues.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good.
Thank you.
7.3, a contract amendment number 14 with Slayden Constructors Incorporated for the beneficial reuse feasibility study in the not-to-exceed amount of $285,560. We have wastewater manager Chris Claymore.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here tonight for authorization to execute amendment 14 with Slayden Constructors for a beneficial reuse feasibility study. This reuse study will determine if the city can use the plant effluent for year-round irrigation and/or artificial groundwater recharge. This is one of two contracts I have for you tonight. The other will be with Aspect Consulting. Funding for the study will come from city CIP funds and matched by the recently awarded OWRD grant. I am asking for approval of amendment 14 and the not-to-exceed amount of $285,560. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Counselor Tofol.
What's the difference between the two?
So they're working together. Aspect is a, their main concern is reuse feasibility, but they cannot do the onsite groundwork nor to do the work with DEQ to make sure that we can get permitting for this. So Slayden and Corolla work together, and then Aspect is a beneficial reuse consulting firm.
I've moved to authorize the city manager to execute contract amendment number 14 with Slayden Constructors, Inc. for a beneficial reuse feasibility study in an amount not to exceed $285,560.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. 7.4, a contract amendment number two with Aspect Consulting LLC in the amount not to exceed $186,030 for continuation of the reclaimed wastewater feasibility study.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. 7.4, a contract amendment number two with Aspect Consulting, LLC in the amount not to exceed $186,030 for continuation of the reclaimed wastewater feasibility study. And we have wastewater manager Chris Claymore.
Hello again. So this contract is in regard to the beneficial reuse study that we just talked about. Aspect will be conducting parcel scale screening, hydrological investigations, as well as they will be the contracting out all the drilling and survey work, so they'll be the prime on that. And I'm asking for approval of this amendment with Aspect Consulting, amendment number two, and $186,030. And like I said, the funding is from the half, 50% from the grant that we were awarded and went for.
Very good.
I've moved to authorize the city manager to execute contract amendment number two with Aspect Consulting, LLC in an amount not to exceed $186,030 for continuation of the reclaimed wastewater feasibility study.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Other matters? Anybody have anything for other matters? Nope. Okay.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.[1785.33]